The date is November 19th, 2024. The time is 18:02 hours and I would like to call the Frederick County School Board meeting to order. We have an agenda before us. Do I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda that is before us.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion that's been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we have an agenda. Madam Vice Chair, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia enter a closed session meeting for the following. Number one, to review and discuss appointments, resignations, staff support, hires, substitutes, tutors, volunteers, and staff performance pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot one. And two, for consultation with legal counsel regarding personnel matters pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, Paragraph A dot eight.
We have a motion to go into closed session. Do we have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in closed session and we will reconvene at 19:00 hours. Madam Vice Chair, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that the board reconvene from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion to return from closed session and for properly seconded any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now reconvened.
And Mr. Chair, I move to certify the closed session. I move that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which this closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to certify the closed session and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That should be a roll call vote.
Oh, I am so sorry. I apologize. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Funas?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Aye.
Now it carries. Madam Vice Chair, do we have any motions? We don't have any motions coming out, correct?
No, sir.
Mr. Chair, we do, yes.
Yeah, administrative appointment?
Oh, oh, yes.
Yes, we do. And, Mr. Chair, we do have administrative appointments.
Yeah, no administrative appointments. It's just the staff, as I mentioned, in closed session, yes.
Ah, thank you. And, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the personnel actions as recommended by the superintendent.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. It is 18:57, so I'm gonna move that we just drive on without recessing for three minutes if that's all right with the board.
Yep.
All right then. So this is the meeting of the Frederick County School Board, and like I said, it is 18:57. Would you all please join me in a moment of silence? Thank you for that. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. I now ask everyone who's able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we have one of our students lead us in the pledge. So if I could please have Kemper Belford come up front, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Great job.
Next is, excuse me, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second.
All right, it's been motioned and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We would like now to pause and read our proclamation to show our appreciation for our wonderful FCPS staff.
Whereas the Frederick County School Board wishes to recognize and express its appreciation for the dedicated service of all Frederick County Public School staff, whereas their tireless efforts have contributed to the growth and success of our educational institutions, whereas staff encounters students, parents, community members, and coworkers of widely differing backgrounds and abilities, and whereas we recognize our staff has provided quality services to all, no matter what their backgrounds or abilities, and whereas we recognize our staff has served Frederick County Public Schools with unwavering commitment and dedication to the betterment of our school division, whereas our staff has worked collaboratively with each other, students, parents, and the community at large, and whereas we are taking this opportunity to recognize the hard work of Frederick County Public School staff and to recognize their importance in ensuring that every child has access to a quality education. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Frederick County School Board expresses its deepest gratitude to all Frederick County Public School staff for their hard work, dedication, and service to the county and the school division.
Thank you for that, Mr. Bell. We're now at our point in the meeting where we get to recognize our amazing students and staff, so I will now hand it over to Dr. Hummer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Greatly appreciated. So good evening and welcome, everyone. It's so great to see you all, and welcome to the Awards of Excellence program portion of our meeting. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect of each individual who is being recognized. Once we have completed it all and all of our presentations, you will have an opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with the chair and myself down below, which we're gonna come down there in a second, and then move to the right to remain at the front so we can take a photo of the entire group being recognized. So, Mr. Chair, if you can come on down with me, that'll be great. Thank you.
This evening we'll start off with FFA multiple events. This fall, students from James Wood and Sherrando High Schools competed in various events around the country. Students traveled to the State Fair in Daswell, Virginia, the National FFA Convention and Expo in Indianapolis, Indiana, and the Big E Eastern States Expo in Springfield, Massachusetts. Results are as follows. And we're gonna start off with James Wood High School. The Virginia State Fair Agriculture Demonstration, the fifth-place team, Elena Perez. And next up at the Big E Eastern States Expo, Livestock Evaluation, the sixth-place team, Kylie Bailey. second-place team, Emma Weiss Carver. She was also third-place individual. Riley was also the ninth-place individual. And Addie Decker. And we also have one more for that team. We have Addie Gore. Moving on to the Big E Eastern States Expo, Parliamentary Procedure Career Development, first-place team, Sarah Hawkins. Caleb Green. Moving on to the National FFA Convention and Expo, Agricultural Sales Leadership Development Event, Silver Rated Team, Morgan Legg. And Morgan was also the Gold Rated Individual. And Corinne Cooley, the Silver Rated Individual. Next, we have the Marketing Plan Leadership Development Event, Silver Rated Team, Riley And now we have the Agricultural Technology and Mechanical Systems Event, Bronze Rated Next up, we have the Frederick County Public Schools Honorary Award. Frederick County Middle School student Kemper Belford is receiving the Frederick County Public Schools Honorary Award for his work in organizing disaster relief efforts for those impacted by Hurricane Helene. His program, Kemper Cares, is currently collecting toiletries, clothing, over-the-counter medical supplies, diapers, bottled water, and various tools. Kemper was able to acquire a generator from Solenberger Hardware as well. A truck with the donated items will head to Tennessee and North Carolina at the end of the month. On October 16th, the FCPS School Nutrition Services Department received their Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services, VDACS, review of the USDA donated food program. The auditor had no recommendations to make as the team was diligent in their management of the program. She stressed that it is rare to see a district of our size managed with such a level of expertise and professionalism. Congratulations.
and enjoy the rest of your evening. Please feel free to stay if you wish to do so. Next up is citizen comments. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting from members of the public, which include residents of Frederick County, Virginia...
Could you call the group into order, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting from members of the public, which includes residents of Frederick County, Virginia, including residents of Winchester City, Virginia, FCPS students, parents, and legal guardians of FCPS students, FCPS employees, and businesses located within Frederick County, Virginia. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, speaker should approach the podium to speak to the school board. Speakers are expected to show appropriate courtesy to the school board, and the school board is committed to showing respect and courtesy to all citizens. Comments that are not protected under the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution will not be tolerated. This includes comments that are vulgar, obscene, threatening, and comments that are intended to incite violence or breaches of peace. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. Violation of the guidelines will result in the chair ruling the speaker out of order. Continued violation will result in removal from the premises. The chair has discretion concerning public participation at school board meetings. School board meetings are taped recorded for the purpose of clarification and development of official minutes. First on the list is Suzanne Miller.
My name is Suzanne Miller. I come to you as a Frederick County resident of the Back Creek District, as a parent of a James Wood High School graduate and a current James Wood High School senior, and as someone who has taught eighth graders for 30 years, 26 of which have been at Frederick County Middle School. I'm here because I didn't want anyone to mistake my silence for indifference or acceptance of what has recently happened in Frederick County Public Schools and most specifically Frederick County Middle School. I come with one question tonight. As a board, who are you? You represent a county whose vision is, quote, "an innovative community where caring relationships and authentic learning inspire all students," and whose mission is to, quote, "nurture all learners to realize their dreams and aspirations." Yet your actions don't match the beliefs you were elected to represent. You've removed a principal who didn't just cancel the LGBTQ plus flex as requested, he canceled them all. Why? Because all students matter to him. He is actually the epitome of the bullet point in the FCPS vision statement that claims that we, quote, "embrace a culture of diversity and inclusiveness." He's the epitome of competency eight in our career investigations class, which reads, quote, "demonstrates respect for diversity." He is the epitome of the social and cultural empathy competency in our Inspire 2025 Portrait of a Graduate Initiative, which states, quote, "embraces the differences between people." So he did all those things which our belief systems support, and now he's gone. This doesn't reflect on him, it reflects on you. Who are you? What do you stand for? Because your actions speak louder than your mismatched answers to questions that have been asked of you to explain the situation of Dr. Putz's removal. Was it flex? Was it scores? Do you know? Because we still do not. I've worked in this county a long time by choice, but I don't recognize us anymore. I recently made sure to scan my room for any inappropriate or unacceptable items according to your new flag and decor policy. I found a few things that once upon a time might have been considered a celebration, which is permissible under this policy, but no longer bring me joy, so I'm returning them to you. One is a plaque I was awarded for being the 2003 Frederick County Middle School Teacher of the Year and a top-three finalist for Frederick County Public Schools. Another one is a plaque I was awarded for being the 2006 Frederick County Middle School Teacher of the Year and a top-three finalist for Frederick County Public Schools. Another one is a plaque I was awarded for being the 2012 Frederick County Middle School Teacher of the Year and a top-three finalist for Frederick County Public Schools. And finally, here's the big one. For one year in 2018, I represented all of Frederick County Public Schools as the Teacher of the Year. At the time, it was a great celebration, and I still treasure the well wishes I received during that time, as I was so proud to represent FCMS. Today, however, I hand it back to you, because I don't even recognize who Frederick County Public Schools is anymore, and I'm disappointed with who we've become. Thank you.
Something tells me the liberals in the room are really gonna enjoy this speech. Hey, retards. Yep, I said it. Uh-oh, is the tolerant left not that tolerant? Oh, no. Well, tonight, you're gonna hear from obese liberal women, some woke teachers, a few faggots...
Mr. Chairman. Will the Speaker... Order in the room! Order in the room! We are at recess at this moment until such time the room comes to order. Some of you here have said that numerous times to us, and you can laugh and chuckle, that's fine. But we will conduct this business, and if it continues to get out of hand, then we'll take another recess. Mr. Abel, Greg Abel.
Excuse me, Mr. Sturdivan, I didn't get to finish my speech. It's my turn.
She stepped away.
My turn.
Point of order, Mr. Sturdivan. She walked away from the podium, so therefore, a comment...
Did in fact...
No, you went into clo... You said you were... No.
Point of order.
My turn to speak.
Um, you violated and you walked away from the podium.
No, I did not. No. I did not violate the rules, and now you're in violation of trying to mess with my First Amendment.
Mr. Sturdivan, I make a motion that we go into recess.
Go into recess.
Second.
Go ahead, I'm gonna be here...
All right. We will go back in. Please second it. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Sir.
If I may. Folks, you're about to hear someone speak things that you don't like. However, it's only for two minutes. If we can let this person get through what it is that she wants to say, and honestly understand that we don't identify with that if we don't, then we can move on to the next speaker. So I ask you, please, hold your comments, hold your boos, hold your cheers, and just let this person speak. Once this person is finished, we can move on. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. It's been motion properly seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excuse me, we're back in session. Ms. Scarborough, you have two more minutes.
Uh, excuse me, uh, can you start the time at three minutes? That's the time...
We'll start it at two.
Hey, retards. Well, tonight, you're going to hear from a few obese liberal women, some woke teachers, a few faggots, one famous redheaded pervert, and a handful of geriatric Democrats with the worst case of dry box you've ever seen. You know, I can't blame the people who are here to voice their opposition to Putt's demotion. After all, it was your lack of transparency that they are even here. The citizens should have been told it wasn't the school board that voted Putt demoted. It was Dr. Hummer after all. Let's move on to the LGBTQ plus kindness flex class. Nothing LGBTQ should be offered to kids at school, or anywhere for that matter. Far too many faggots and perverts are trying to get in the minds of our innocent children to recruit them. Personally, I won't tolerate that. We've all heard the excuses. The flex class wasn't a class and had no curriculum. It was optional. Yet neither any of you or Principal Putt notified the parents of its existence, and that's where you [bleep] up. It sure looks like FCPS tried to pull a fast one and slip that in. Back to Putt and the Rainbow Mafia seeking to defend him and his honor. Did anyone ever think that if Putt had a problem with his demotion, he would have spoken out about it? Instead, not one statement has come from Putt, which seems odd until you find out what his current salary is. The only thing Putt is upset about is that he made the local paper a few times, and there is no doubt in my mind that the superintendent made a deal with Putt. It probably went something like, "Parents are pissed. How about you take this demotion? Less work, and you'll get to keep your salary."
Time.
"Oh, and don't give any statements about the demotion, or the contract will be void."
Order.
Faggots.
Order. Greg Abel.
My name is Greg Abel, and I'm speaking tonight as a parent of a student in FCPS, a resident of the Gainesboro District, and a teacher at Frederick County Middle School. There are two issues that I would like to address this evening. First is the removal of Dr. Putt as principal of Frederick County Middle School. Dr. Hummer, you have stated that you are nothing if not transparent. Please tell me how an administrator's moved, removed on a Monday and no one knows about it until a Thursday, and it is seen in your eyes as transparent. You left an entire school with no direction for three days. Not only that, when you spoke to the staff, you mentioned that you asked Dr. Putt to remove only one flex offering. Either you think that the faculty and staff are stupid, or you did not think that statement through thoroughly enough. If you would have, you would have known that by definition, that is discrimination. If you would have looked into this more effectively, you would have seen that Mr. Davy sent his email showing his disgust for the flex offering on October 3rd. On October 4th, Dr. Putt kindly responded to this email informing him of the principles of Inspire 2025 Portrait of a Graduate. This is something that was voted on by the school board and is the governing document of our school system. I know through emails that were shared with me that Mr. Atkins and maybe you do not like this document. However, whether you like it or not, it is the governing document until another one is created. The removal of Dr. Putt has not only been hurtful to me, but to the entire school. A large portion of our student population has been affected by this change. You have created a culture of fear within our building for both students and staff. As you should know, fear seriously impedes the learning process. It seems to show a lack of vision and leadership for our school and our school system as a whole. You have intentionally misled us, and that is not the vision we have. Secondly, to the school board, I find it reprehensible that you would come out in a public forum and threaten the faculty and staff of this county. It is funny to me that you can sit there and threaten and judge these teachers while one amongst you is a convicted criminal for insurrection and has had multiple DUIs. How can anyone that has committed such crimes sit in judgment of us? Teachers that decide to make education their profession do so with one thing in mind, supporting all students, not just certain groups of students. If you tell us that we cannot support certain groups of students, where does it end? Would you like us to pick and choose? Because that would never happen. Will it, will it be you that chooses what the students, the students that we support? Because that will change with every voting cycle. Maybe it is you that has been put on notice, unnoticed for discrimination and for estimating the teachers of this county. As you can see from the attendance of tonight's meeting, from teachers of this county, and you can, from other counties other than ours, there is a reason that VA headquarters received over 800 emails asking for them to support the teachers of this county. It is because teachers all across this Commonwealth know one thing, that we will support all students, no matter what group they fall into. I thought that it was the job of you, the school board and superintendent, that you all support students of this county. This incident has shown one thing, that you will only support the students that you deem worthy of your support. Thank you.
Vincent Turner. Chris Lawson.
My name is Christina Lawson, and I live in the Gainesboro District. When I was in middle school, my parents divorced, and my father came out as gay. This was 1978, and I was 13. As you would expect, I was very lost and confused. What did this mean for my family? What did this mean for me? Did this mean I would be gay too? I had a lot of questions and nowhere to turn. The adults in my life who should have supported me instead added to the turmoil. I was told to be cautious around my father and his friends because they were pedophiles, because they would try to recruit me. I was told all about hell and damnation. I was told to feel shame. Here I am, 47 years later, still listening to the same hate, ignorance, and intolerance as I did in 1978. I don't think this is okay. Do you? Middle school is tough for everyone, and having someplace I could go to ask questions and receive support would have been life-changing for me. A club, a flex period, a trusted adult, being told that there was nothing to be ashamed of, that my father was still the same loving person I had always known, that he was born this way and had done nothing wrong. A simple act of kindness would have been a blessing. Having someone to trust would have been immeasurable. I read something recently that said, "Helping one person might not change the world, but it might change the world for one person." As superintendent and school board members, your task is to create an environment where all students can live, learn, and thrive. Your responsibility is to achieve the best educational outcome for every student. It's been well documented that children learn better in a safe nurturing environment where they feel valued and understood. What message does this send when a principal can be removed for wanting to show kindness to his students and staff? Since when did kindness become a dirty word? LGBTQ plus students are four times more likely to attempt suicide compared to their straight peers. Poor treatment and bullying have shown to be a significant risk factor. Affirming and inclusive schools should be everyone's goal. Recent polls show that 14 million adults in the U.S. identify as a member of the LGBTQ plus community. Gen Z adults are more likely to identify than older generations. There have always been queer people. Pretending they don't exist is a lost cause. I decided that I could no longer be silent about another generation living through some of the same things that my father and my family did. That's why I'm speaking out tonight. I'm speaking out for others who are unable to speak up for themselves or their family members. Don't let this school board make the community, staff, and students complicit in dehumanizing and traumatizing another generation of queer people. To LGBTQ students, I say, you are not alone, there is no shame, and you have done nothing wrong. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Carol Puckett. Alan Turing was a mathematician who worked for British Intelligence to decipher the Nazis' Enigma code. His work helped end World War II. Because of his labor on this and other projects, he was elected to the British Royal Society in 1951. However, he did not get to live out his life as a hero. Alan was a gay man, and that made him a criminal in his country's eyes. He went from hero to criminal for no other reason than for whom he loved. Alan Turing did not choose to be gay. He was engaged to Joan Clark, another brilliant mathematician, in his effort to conform to societal expectations. He fought his nature and even took drugs supplied from the government to cure him. These drugs changed his brain chemistry, and he was no longer able to use his mathematical abilities. Mr. Turing took his own life in 1954 at the age of 41. Imagine what other wonders he could have accomplished if the world had simply accepted him for who he was. According to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, suicide is the second leading cause of death of young people. Lesbians, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning young people are more than four times, as we just heard, four times more likely to attempt suicide than their peers. The Trevor Project estimates that more than 1.8 million LGBTQ plus young people seriously consider suicide every year in the U.S., and at least one attempts suicide every 45 seconds. Every 45 seconds. The Trevor Project found that 41% of queer young people seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, including half of transgender and non-binary youth. The Trevor Project also found that young people report lower rates of suicidal thoughts when they have access to affirming spaces. Let me repeat that. Young people report lower rates of attempting suicide when they receive access to affirming spaces. Principal Jerry Putt provided a safe space for our community at his middle school by allowing the group LGBTQ plus kindness to meet during flex time. This choice provided a safe environment for students, allowing them the respect and the support they so desperately need. By removing Principal Putt, you have removed the only safe space these students have. You're also telling them that they are not valued members of the community and should not be seen. You are ensuring that some of these students will follow in Turing's footsteps, but not as heroes, as casualties of hate and ignorance. You have increased the probability that these students will commit suicide.
Time.
You have blood on your hands. Shame.
Chairman, members of the school board, I am Ashley Haynes from the St. Wall District. I come here tonight as an FCPS employee and also a parent of a scholar at Frederick County Middle School. I'm currently in my 19th year of teaching, and I've had the pleasure of working with a handful of principals, and each one has taught me how to be a better educator. One in particular I have worked with in two different school divisions. I started working with Dr. Jerry Putt when he was a principal at Daniel Morgan. Then in the summer of 2020, I decided it was time to make the change to come and work at Frederick County Middle School. One reason I made the change was the ability to have Dr. Putt as my principal. As with many of my fellow colleagues that worked with Dr. Putt at Daniel Morgan, they made the change. What does it say about a principal when the teachers are willing to leave their current placement and even change school divisions just to work with him? Dr. Putt is a compassionate leader who fosters an inclusive nurturing school environment where every scholar feels valued and supported. He cultivated a positive school culture built on trust, respect, and open communication. Whether engaging with staff, scholars, or parents, he would actively listen and encourage collaboration, making everyone feel like an integral part of the school. In my 19 years of being an educator, I have learned many things. One of the things I learned from Dr. Putt is no matter what happened during the school day, what matters most is the well-being of our scholars. Dr. Putt put every scholar first. When flex time was put into our schedule, it allowed every scholar the opportunity to spend 25 minutes of their day doing something they enjoyed. Flex time is what we used to call home room or advisory period when I was in school. It allowed scholars to belong to clubs and attend meetings, which, if those meetings were held after school, many of those scholars could not attend. They would get, we also allowed them to get extra help in their academic classes from their teachers, extra band or chorus practice, or even take a walk outside on our beautiful campus. These are just some of the flexes that were offered. Flex time allowed our scholars time with their peers and a time to venture out and try something new. We did not have a hidden agenda or curriculum we were teaching. We were just offering 25 minutes of the school day to promote scholar autonomy and engagement while still providing structure and academic support, which comes down to about 5% of their day. Now, as a parent of a, I've seen a scholar. Sorry. Sorry. Having to, sorry, guys. Having to tell him that Dr. Putt was no longer his principal was just as hard as when we, the staff, were told. Dr. Putt would greet every scholar in the morning with a smile, a fist bump, or even a high five while of course playing music, which for many of the scholars and staff was the highlight of our day. Then at the end of the day, he would stand along the road waving goodbye to all the buses. The scholars knew that Dr. Putt was going to be there for them. Dr. Putt's leadership, kindness, and dedication made a meaningful difference in not just my son, but to all scholars. He not only inspired them academically, but also a sense of excitement about learning. As a parent, it is reassuring to know that my son was being guided and supported by someone who genuinely cares about their well-being. Thank you.
Kaitlin Summer. Kaitlin Summer.
Hello, my name is Helen Sherrier. I'm from the Gainesboro District. I'm also Frederick County Public Schools teacher, and I work at FCMS. I am a sixth grade math teacher at FCMS, and recently, we have been subjected to troubling threats from certain community members and school board officials, putting us on notice. These threats come from individuals with a limited understanding of public schools' purpose, their responsibility to support this vital institution, their commitment needed to prepare the community's children for uncertain future. Since we can only guess what careers today's students will pursue and the new technologies they will encounter, it is essential to equip them with the skills to engage with their future confidently. Throughout my 20 years in education, I have seen that every student I've taught has something valuable to offer society. Each child needs support, guidance, education, and most importantly, love. They require more than just basic facts. They need quality educators, individuals who possess empathy, knowledge, and the ability to connect with students to build their self-confidence and teach them problem-solving and self-advocacy. Attracting and retaining such educators is challenging, especially when school board members openly criticize them in local newspapers and on social media. The use of inflammatory language to belittle individuals and spread fear and hatred is unacceptable. It has created an unsafe environment for many students and staff. The actions of the school board promoting hatred and fear toward members of the LGBTQ plus community are intolerable. No political or religious beliefs can justify discriminatory behavior. Teachers who stood up against these harmful remarks and actions have faced further threats to their careers from school board members and their allies. Leadership through intimidation is unacceptable and will not lead to positive outcomes. We must prioritize respect, inclusivity, and safety for everyone. And when I say everyone, I truly mean it. My response... My responsibility is to provide equitable educational opportunities for students from all backgrounds, including different families, races, religions, beliefs, genders, and abilities. I'm tasked with teaching not only mathematics, but also values like tolerance, compassion, and empathy. I must educate both the bully and the victim. However, I never anticipated that my students would also face bullying from the board.
Holden Alexander.
Holden Alexander. Hello, Chairman of the Board. I'm Holden Alexander of Gainsborough District. I currently am a student at Jameswood High School and a former student of Frederick County Middle School. I'd like to talk about today the removal of Dr. Putt and specifically how he helped us. When I first came to the middle school, I was a little scared, and I kind of felt better about it because Mr. Putt was there. He opened us all up with a friendly smile. He was just a nice person. It just all felt better. He also brought in things like Next Project, which, Dr. Hummer, I believe you were there, and you saw how good we are. We did stuff like launching a balloon, we made movies, all that stuff. And then it was removed, and the last thing we had was flex time, which I just believe was removed. I'd just like to say that Dr. Putt always thought about the students, and he was one of the best principals I've ever had. I was kind of shocked when I got to high school that Ms. Andrews would not stand outside and wave to students. Big shocker. I don't know if I'll ever get over it, but Dr. Putt truly is one of the best principals I've ever had, and that's all I really have to say. Thank you. Good night.
Pamela Hughes.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I've lived in Frederick County for 41 years. Last school board meeting I went to was 2007, when my youngest graduated from Shrando. I had to come out tonight. I love Jerry Putt. He was my principal at Daniel Morgan. He is a principal among principals. He has, he's full of principles. From the moment he came, he opened our eyes to inequalities and discrimination that we just didn't even see. But he respectfully told us, explained, changed the rules, and he was right. He was right. He looked at the rules, he looked through the rules to the students. Students weren't allowed to wear pajama pants, and then he explained to us, "But what if you don't have clean clothes, and that's the only thing you can wear to school?" He cares so deeply about the students. So many times, I would see him sitting on the staircase, talking to one student who was having a very bad day. And so many students come to school without their basic needs being met: food, shelter, and safety. And safety is such a big deal. How can a student engage their higher level of thinking skills if they are hungry or if they are afraid? Bullying is a huge issue, especially for the LGBTQ-plus community. And what happens when you're bullied? You shut down. And even if you're not being bullied, if you are, the kids that surround you, they shut down too, because it's scary. And they know they should speak up, but it's scary to do so. It affects every student that is witness to that bullying. And so then, when you start to shut down, you get tremendous anxiety. Absenteeism would increase. Despair would come in. And despair, as we know, can lead to suicidal thoughts. And unfortunately, as a teacher, I have had to lose, had to see a student take their own life. It's not just a statistic. It's true. It's real. If you go to the Virginia Department of Education website, there is a page on suicide prevention, comprehensive prevention strategies. The first two strategies are just so evident in how Dr. Putt...
Rachel Ratliff.
Good evening, Members of the Board and Dr. Hummer. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening. My name is Rachel Ratliff, and I'm speaking as a graduate of Frederick County Public Schools, resident of Frederick County in the Stonewall District, employee of Frederick County Public Schools, and a soon-to-be parent of a Frederick County school student, and a member of the Frederick County Education Association, speaking as an individual. I noticed, um, excuse me, this evening, I'd like to share with you some things I notice as an employee. I notice teachers and instructional assistants that work daily to provide their best instruction to their students. I notice teachers looking out for their students and making quick decisions for their safety. I notice a music teacher putting on a wonderful community choral event for Veterans Day. I notice a librarian promoting and setting up the Fall Book Fair that students look forward to each year. I notice administrators that take the time to listen to their staff and work to find solutions that support teachers and students. I notice a school PTO putting on a first-ever trunk-or-treat for the community that had a turnout of over 900 people. I notice custodians working hard each and every day, not only keeping our schools clean, but helping teachers with daily tasks to make their classrooms more conducive to learning. I notice a math advisory committee that has worked over this last summer and this year to create a county curriculum that is aligned to state standards and provides multiple high-quality instructional resources for teachers to use. I notice a literacy coach, reading specialist, and intervention resource teacher that meet with teachers to ensure they are confident in implementing the state-mandated VLA reading plans. I notice an office staff that goes above and beyond their job descriptions on a daily basis. And last, but certainly not least, I notice students that enter school every day excited to learn and excited to share their learning with their family and friends. I know there are plenty of things that go unnoticed throughout our many schools and throughout the school days. I invite all of you to notice the many amazing things that happen in Frederick County Public Schools each and every day. Thank you.
Matt Edwards.
Hi, I'm Matt Edwards, a member of the Red Bud District. I want to start by reading a few quotes from the emails Mr. Davey sent Dr. Putt that appear to have motivated the decision in this situation. LGBTQ-plus kindness should not be allowed at all. We are offended that everyone keeps trying to force the LGBTQ-plus alphabet down everyone's throat and into everyone's lives. This agenda they are pushing to try to make everyone accept the LGBTQ-plus is ridiculous and has no place in public education. What are you going to do next? Let cross-stressers come into the school and do storytime? This is what you based your decision on, an email by one parent full of bigotry and hate. People have to ask why LGBT students should have a special club. Tonight is a perfect example of why. People bully them. They struggle with depression and anxiety. And when people come to speak to the board on their behalf, people like Mrs. Klein scroll on their computers, Mr. Atkins, Mr. Bell, and Dr. Hummer are on their phones. Do you think that they are not noticing that you are more interested in your phone or your laptop than you are in their depression, anxiety, and suicide? They need a community because they know people like you hate them. That is why they need a club, because they're looking for love and peace. There were other clubs available. They were named clubs according to the email by Dr. Putt, the Astronomy Club, Crochet Club, Yearbook Club. Clubs are non-curricular, and if that is true, it is the right of LGBT students to have their own club. It's protected by the Equal Access Act, just as the rights of Christians to have a club are also protected. And if you would have done your homework, you would have found out that many, many schools have been sued since 1999 for stopping LGBT clubs, and they've lost. The vision of FCPS is to be an innovative community where caring relationships and authentic learning inspire all students. So how does this decision fit that vision? How exactly does discrimination and bigotry communicate caring? This decision is not about anything but fear and hate. It's not about what is best for our students. Caring is part of the vision of the school system. Kindness is caring. Whether you like it or not, LGBTQIA+ students are citizens of this county. They are protected against discrimination by the Constitution, as decided in Boestock versus Clayton County. They have a constitutional right to form clubs if there are other clubs being offered, as affirmed by Westside Community Schools versus Murgens, both Supreme Court cases. Dozens of schools have lost lawsuits trying to block LGBTQ clubs on campus because, in every case, the courts have ruled they were in violation of the Equal Access Act. With your comments and decisions in the last month, you've broken your oath to the Constitution and let us all down. More importantly, you've brought stress and harm on children. Children who simply wanted to be themselves. Children who just want to belong. Children who deserve kindness. The adults in this room, specifically you, are supposed to be the ones putting a stop to bullying, not leading the way.
Ashley Powell. Okay, yes, sir. Justin Powell, then.
So that should be six minutes. She yielded her time.
Three minutes, sir.
Hi, my name is Justin Powell, Gainsborough District, disabled veteran, father of two children at the school at Frederick County. First, I want to address the removal of Dr. Putt as principal. I do not feel this was an appropriate act. All this did clearly was cause division amongst the community. It's absurd. It's also a great example of misappropriated funds, as Dr. Putt is still working as a district teacher. His salary is well above the max salary of a teacher by approximately $40,000. Either find just cause to fire him or replace him as principal and stop wasting our tax dollars. I would also like to bring up the issue of discrimination. I love that I'm right after you, bringing up the Equal Access Act, because Christians are allowed to have a club after school hours. There is a bus that shows up to school and takes the kids off-school property because of the Equal Access Act. So if you guys want to have a club, you are free to, after school. It is the same protections under the law as religion and everything else. You are allowed to have a club after school. When it's during school hours, you are during government time, and this is not allowed per the law. I would also like to bring up issues of other, issues that I have of discrimination. My son was offered mental health services by a third-party organization because he is mixed race. This is an issue I have because nobody in here who is not of mixed race is not offered this service. Many of you might want this service for your child, but they cannot get it unless they're of mixed race. From my understanding, this is coming down from the federal government funding. So apparently, I'm going to have to go up to the integrity general to deal with this, according to violation of the Fourteenth Amendment. I would also like to address issues following government employees being allowed to express their personal ideologies and viewpoints during school hours as a representative of the district. We have Supreme Court cases, Pickering versus Board of Education, as well as Conick versus Myers, that shows that while teachers are employees of the government in school, they are not allowed to push their personal agendas. That means the individual apple pie who is wearing a dress needs to stop. If not, under the Equal Protection Act, I will request religious services be brought back to school. Thank you.
Anna Moffett Thompson.
Good evening. My name is Anna Moffett Thompson, but most of my students know me as Mrs. MT. I am a teacher at Frederick County Middle School. I am also a parent of two children at Gainsborough. What you permit is what you promote is a philosophy that frames the way I run my classroom. Ever since Dr. Putt used that phrase in my first year at Frederick County Middle School. It is a philosophy that our school board members and school board administrators should take into consideration more often. Last month, after stating, and this month, after stating, the expectations of decorum during public comments, you, Mr. Sturdeman, allowed individuals to stand at this microphone and use vile and inappropriate language while lobbying vitriolic falsehoods and slanderous insinuations about Frederick County Middle School staff. By permitting such comments and language, you are promoting a community of culture, a community culture of distrust, and perpetuating a cycle of misinformation about nonexistent secret agendas and curriculums of educators. And yet, you wonder why students have such disrespectful classroom behavior, which, let's be honest, is only a small faction, even though you seem to focus on it a lot. Last month, several members of the school board, who have never taught in a classroom, Ms. Klein, put highly-trained teaching professionals who met, meet the school board's highly-qualified criteria on notice. You permitted people to intimidate staff without just cause, therefore promoting an ever-growing culture of intimidation and distrust in public education. Yet you wonder why a student might say to a teacher, "Your days are numbered." You taught them that here. But here is the beautiful part of that philosophy. If I permit my students to have a safe place to be their true, authentic selves, then I promote a culture of acceptance and kindness in my classroom. When I permit my students to explore their own interests and spend 25 minutes during flex at the end of a very long day, surrounding themselves with things they want to do and people they want to be with, I am promoting the development of a child that retains their curiosity and wonder, a child that can question the status quo and dream of something better, a child that won't follow the crowd and allow themselves to be indoctrinated. And if I remember correctly, that is the same type of indoctrination that most of you ran for, ran to fight against. So perhaps you should remember, we are all here to do what is best for our students and scholars, and perhaps you should allow the educators of Frederick County Public Schools to do the job they are trained and entrusted, you entrusted us to do. Remember, what you promote, what you promote, permit, is what you promote.
Time.
Thank you, Dr. Putt, for your words of wisdom, guidance, and setting an example for all of us.
Sean Porter. Sean Porter. Jay Richardson.
Good evening. I'm Jay Richardson, Red Bud District. I consider myself to be fairly socially liberal, so I generally think people will be able to do what they want as long as they don't harm anyone. It's a free country, after all. No other country has our degree of individual liberty, our level of freedom. But, however, when it comes to the education of children and adolescents, what they are exposed to is very important, and I need to say this, teachers do not get free speech in the classroom. They need to follow the script. The ones who support rainbow flags in schools and having these clubs and other measures for the alphabet students is say it's about inclusion. It's so they feel included and safe from bullying. That should be a priority for everyone. Every student should be, should feel included. The whole school should be a safe place for all students. This space is safe for you, that others are not? Schools and teachers just love operating in loco parentis, even with regard to matters that directly contravene the wishes and values of the parents. Some people think hanging a rainbow flag in school is no big deal. Daryl Bell, I don't think a rainbow flag indoctrinates anyone, but the teacher shouldn't start talking about their lifestyle. That's exactly what message the flag sends. That's exactly what you're saying by hanging the flag. You're saying, "This is great, we promote this." I think the message that all of this is sending is that gay people are different. They need to be treated... They need to be treated differently. They need, they are special. They need special accommodations in school. They need special classes on how to be kind to them. They need special spaces so they feel safe, special symbols and flags to be hung in the school. I think the message that's sending is that LGBTQ people are more emotionally sensitive and weaker than the rest of us, and they need to be singled out for inclusion. The schools wouldn't go to such lengths for any other group, not a racial group, not an ethnic group, not a religious minority, none. No other group gets this treatment. It's easy to say there's nothing wrong with all of this, but if you take a minute and actually use your brains and think about it, you are treating one group of people differently than everybody else. That is discrimination. I think, I think about what it's like to be a middle and high school student, a very challenging and confusing time, and it's when you're starting to figure out who you are, where you belong. So I think a lot of people, a lot of young people are seeing this and saying, "Hey, this looks inviting." Nobody, everybody is told to be kind to LGBTQ people. No one's allowed to criticize or judge them. They're immediately accepted by everyone. They have their own flag, their own special spaces, their own special form of pride. "Hey, I want to be part of this." So yes, they are being indoctrinated. They are being pushed by the schools and by extension, the government to join the club.
Daniel Scalf. Daniel Scalf.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. In an email to Jerry Putt quoted by the Winchester Star, FCPS parent Chris Davey stated that LGBTQ plus kindness should not be allowed at all, end quote. I understand that platitudes and buzzwords are more popular than critical, critical thinking and relevant questions. However, I'd like to ask an open question to our citizenry. What is LGBTQ kindness as a concept? By Mr. Davey asking if Mr. Putt would allow cross-dressers into the classroom, I assume that he equates kindness with approval or endorsement. And even if this is not true for Mr. Davey, I know plenty of people personally who do take this view. Right now, I wish to address them. There's plenty we all encounter every day we're not going to approve of. I don't approve when parents want to let their kids hang on the iPad for hours and not do their basic job. I don't approve when an underachieving high school dropout messages me with an amazing opportunity to pay my way into a pyramid scheme. The thing is, these don't require my approval because we live in a free country. I thank God for that, I truly do. The fact that people get to leave, live their lives in accordance with the personal beliefs or values is the thing I most love about our country. Now, I believe there is a crisis of education in our country, which is the result of many issues beyond the scope of what we're talking about right now. However, I think the ability of students to feel welcome in places of learning is indeed one of these issues. Who actually wants to show up in a place they don't feel welcomed or safe? In my opinion, to willfully ignore the social aspects of going to school is either naive or cruel. I have many friends who went through public schools in Winchester, Front Royal, et cetera, who are gay adults, and they very much struggled because childhood is vulnerable enough already. I don't believe, as Mr. Davey implied in his question about what's next, that Mr. Putt or any school staff was pushing a particular agenda beyond giving students an opportunity to be in a space where they could feel less anxious about who they are, that's it. Mr. Davey and anyone else is free to disapprove of the existence of gay people. That doesn't change the fact that every day, kids will struggle with discovering who they are or feeling like an outsider because they hear how some folks will talk about the alphabet people, like those words are poison. And that doesn't mean that we should punish staff, teachers, or administrators for recognizing this and attempting to meet their need, which would strengthen the education of our children, all of whom are the future of this great nation. Thank you.
Mr. Wright.
Good evening. Love the kids unconditionally. This is what Dr. Putt told me success looked like. Perform this one task, and I succeed. Every day, he leads by that example. I saw it from him every day, in one way, shape, or form. An outstanding leader of teachers and students providing a safe space for young men and women to learn about their own identity in a safe, non-judgmental space called flex periods. Curriculum-free classrooms. I'll say that again. Curriculum-free classrooms. Where teachers offer safety and comfort for kids to have a little freedom at the end of their day. Dr. Putt engages students day after day in active, two-way discussions. In Dr. Putt's eyes, when having these discussions, he's a guide to these kids to find opportunities to improve themselves. Most of the time, these kids leave smiling or laughing because Dr. Putt made them feel like it's okay to make a mistake. In fact, it's pivotal that we make them in order to find success. This is the man, the leader and the educator you have dismissed. Folks, you are throwing the baby out the window with the bathwater. If there's any crack in that door to bring Dr. Putt back, please do it. You'll be glad you did. To inspire, innovate, and motivate students in a global society. Dr. Putt, if you're out there listening, mission accomplished.
Stephanie Jordan.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Jordan, and I am speaking as an FCPM, FCPS employee, as well as a former FCPS student and as a, uh, FCPS graduate. I want to take a few minutes to introduce you to a saying that was, that a pretty smart FCPS teacher once told me. What you permit, you promote. As parents, aunts, uncles, and every other adult, we know this saying to be true. We know that if we allow kids to stay up all night, it's going to be incredibly hard to get them to go to bed at a decent hour. We know that if we let kids play on their phone well into the middle of the night, it almost becomes impossible to get them off their phone at a decent hour. This saying also works for other things as well, however. At FCPS, we have permitted quite a few things that as someone who has spent the past 30 years of her life, being proud of her Frederick County Public Schools background, I am not proud to promote. We have permitted hate speech, and we even permitted intimidation. We permitted a principal's career to be destroyed because he wouldn't discriminate and he wouldn't single out a student. Is this what we promote? I mean, we permitted it. When people ask me why they should apply to work here and not go over the mountain, what do I tell them? That we permit the bullying of employees and therefore we promote that? Before I lose my time, please know that I, as well as everyone else who works at FCPS, knows that we are on notice. We also know where we can go if we don't like something. But I don't want to go. FCPS has been my home since my Shorando days. I love having that connection with those kids to tell them that my handprint is also on that senior hallway. Someone out there probably has my lunch number. And if I can get an advanced studies diploma, they certainly can get one. But I also can't help shake the feeling that we're promoting things here at FCPS I don't want to be known for. I don't want to come from the county where we threaten and bully our employees. I don't want Frederick County Public Schools to be known as the county where employees are afraid to speak because of retaliation. I don't want Frederick County Public Schools to be the laughingstock of this part of the state. We need to permit better so we can promote better. The students here, both current and former, deserve better than this. Thank you.
Michael Seragus.
Hello, Board. Hello, Dr. Hummer. Hello, colleagues. I'm Mike Seragus. I am a member of the glorious Stonewall Magisterial District, and I am, most importantly, here today to be a voice, to share, and to let the Frederick County staff know that as the president of the Winchester Education Association, we stand in solidarity with our brothers and sisters here in the county in the face of any of the issues that they might need our support in. And so I want to talk again about what's been said several times before. What you permit, you promote. Now, I'm an attractive, six-foot-two, Aquarius, you know, cis, hetero, male in a, in a fairly, you know, prestigious job. I'm a high school teacher. But when we look at what we see in this room, in previous boardrooms, in the statements that some of you have made, being put, quote, "on notice" is not helpful. And I know that I do not want that to be promoted. I live in Frederick County. I spend money in Frederick County, a whole lot of money in Frederick County. But I work in the city, and we do some things that I'm really proud of in the city, just like we do some things here, you do some things here in the county that you're really proud of. And I wrote a few notes about that. And what I'm really, really proud of in the Frederick County school system is Inspire 25. Because what Inspire 25 says is that Frederick County wants to do authentic learning for all students, and that they want to create a culture of diversity and inclusiveness. And you spell it out even further, which I think is glorious. In goal number two, you say you want to create a nurturing environment. And goal number four, you want compassionate staff. Quoting the Trevor Project, many LGBTQ plus young people lack access to affirming spaces. Just over half say their school is LGBTQ affirming. Thirty-eight percent of LGBTQ youth report that their home is affirming. Only 38%. A school can be the place where kids spend their time. And a school needs to be a place where we can support those students. And as the Winchester Education President, I do want to say to my Frederick County friends, you're always welcome in the city. Thank you.
Erin. Is it? Jeffrey. Oh, thank you. Sorry.
Good evening. My name is Erin Jeffreyon. I currently work at Frederick County Middle School. However, before that, my previous vocation was as a United Methodist pastor. Many of my friends and colleagues have already made most of the points that I was going to make this evening, so I would like to instead read from the United States Department of Education, Legal Guidelines Regarding the Equal Access Act and Recognition of Student-Led Non-Curricular Groups. The Act applies to any public or secondary school that receives federal funds and creates a limited open forum by allowing one or more non-curricular student groups to meet on its premises during non-instructional time. Schools meeting these criteria are forbidden to prevent access or deny fair opportunity to students who wish to hold meetings on school grounds. The Act does not mention specific types of student groups to which equal access rights apply. It instead broadly provides that schools allowing at least one non-curriculum-related student group may not deny comparable access to any other student group because of the religious, political, philosophical, or other content of the speech of the group's meetings. The Act therefore prohibits schools from banning student-led, non-curricular groups because of the content of the speech at the group's meetings. The Act identifies narrow exceptions. However, schools may not ban or suppress the speech of student groups based on a desire to avoid the discomfort or unpleasantness that always accompany an unpopular viewpoint. It would be my understanding based on this, that Dr. Putt's decision to suspend all flex gatherings rather than discriminate and solely end one that was unpopular with a few parents, seems to be more in the spirit and letter of this law. I would also like to state that if flex should come back, we cannot offer Christian activities where I would teach any student because that would be curriculum. However, I would happily offer my time and my Master's of Divinity degree and my classroom to host any student that also wanted to discuss, have a safe place to discuss Christian ideals. Thank you.
Jennifer, is it Bay Care? There you go. Thank you, sorry.
Uh, good evening. My name is Jennifer Boycourt. I, uh, I reside in the Shawnee District. Holden, I do want to note that Karen McCoy will stand outside and wave to you if you went to Shorando. So there's that. Plug for Ms. McCoy. Um, I'm here tonight because it seems that an inaccurate narrative about me and my efforts to advocate for my child have permeated FCPS and its school board members, so allow me to correct the record. I have been cooperative and willing to work with Shorando and FCPS to ensure that my student's IEP was properly implemented and his needs adequately met. This matter dates to September of 2023. And I have come in good faith and in a spirit of collaboration, time and time again, only to be refused, rejected, and let down by the school district. Nine IEP meetings and over $7,000-plus in fees to my advocate, only to still be addressing the same issues over a year later. Is no one even the slightest bit curious what has occurred on both sides to result in the need for nine IEP meetings? Frankly, I've attempted to work with Shorando from September of 2023 until 3:15:24 before they even began to implement my child's assignment tracker, in spite of it being carried over from middle school in his transition IEP and being directly addressed as a goal in his current IEP. Two, that I've met with Dr. Hummer three times and Ms. Knight two times regarding this matter. I have met with Dr. Hummer two times, and both times, the theme was more of the systemic issues my family and I suspect others have faced working with Special Services Department of FCPS. I've met with Ms. Knight one time after Dr. Hummer referred me back to his team. This meeting came after, this meeting came after Ms. Knight was scheduled to attend an IEP, but I was informed by Ms. McDonald at 4:15, the afternoon before the meeting, that Ms. Knight was unavailable as she was at a week-long conference. Then I was informed that Ms. Knight would prefer a parent meeting, which I honored. Most recently, my meeting on 10/31/24 did not occur because after being informed on 10/16 and receiving responses from Ms. Knight and communication with her assistant to schedule said meeting, including a link for the advocate to participate virtually, I received an email on 10/28/24 around 5:45 from Ms. Knight stating that she was not in agreement with my educational advocate attending the 10/31 meeting to review the executive functioning plan with me. I have requested, and to date, I have received no explanation of why FCPS was not in agreement with my educational advocate, who might, as I add, who, who has worked with my child since the seventh grade on his IEP. Lastly, I'd like to address the statement that our school division has been providing me with the multitude of opportunities and services for my child to be successful. And I'm going to run out of time, so I guess the bottom line I'm going to say, many of you know what's in this, is it's funny to me how the outrage is chosen. When are we going to be outraged because a kid's not getting his IEP services?
Hannah Bowen. Hannah Bowen.
Judge not lest ye be judged. John 2:9 says-
So I understand the reason. Since when has it become acceptable for discriminatory speech or saying that people are indoctrinating? When the only one putting a spotlight on the shoving sexuality are those who bring it up in here with their own spotlight on it? I'm the daughter of two ordained ministers, and you know what? I was in my tolerance club in high school, and that's what this is. In case you didn't notice, LGBT kindness, the key word there is kindness, and that's not a bad thing. So if you missed it, we talked about a lot of statistics. They're more likely to become suicidal or bullied. So these conversations that we're concerned about, they're already happening between students every single day. So having an adult there to make sure that they're safe and just listening to those conversations is not a negative thing. It saved a friend of mine from suicide. That's what happened in my class. So how can these kids not feel like the world is against them when we see adults even acting as bullies? I'm not saying that we should shove gender or sexuality at our kids because I don't believe in that. I think we should teach the curriculum. But telling kids they should be force-fed medication is not right either. Equal access to both. If you want to have Bible Club, you need to have the other one too. So which, I got to ask, since I'm going to run out of time, which is the bigger sin, to love or to hate? I'm going to choose love, because loving others, no matter what they choose. The other option is hate, and that's a sin that breeds poison. John 4:20 says, "If anyone says, 'I love God and hates his brother,' he is a liar." And for those of you who are going to say this has nothing to do with politics or religion, remember, lying is a sin too.
Brian Nury.
Brian Nury, Pecan District. This past weekend, I was out in Chantilly judging a public forum debate tournament, as I am most Saturdays. Three different teachers came up to me and said, "You're from Winchester. That's Frederick County, right? Tell me something. What the hell is wrong with your county?" One pointed to the rainbow sticker on her laptop and said, "You know, it's not really hard to support the students. They're better learners when they've been made to feel recognized." Apparently not here, they're not. Three of you are educators, and I thought you would know this. Supporting the students where they are is one of the first things we're taught to do for the kids. When asked why other systems can manage this so well, while we're making policy against it, one board member said, "Well, the politics here aren't the same." But the kids are. The kids are the same. And instead of putting kids first, we've actually put them on notice, that they have to monitor themselves and who they associate with, and that have to govern their own personal behaviors lest they be turned in for not fitting in. So who can these kids trust at school? Clearly, this was all triggered by a safe gathering place at Frederick County Middle turned in by a kid to apparent itching to out the weird kids. Funny that we're letting some of the worst opinions in the area dictate school policy in the county. The Star clearly stated that the LGBTQ kindness period was the target of Dr. Hummer's ire, not any of the other gatherings. Much like Governor Youngkin's attempted model policies, some people would rather paint targets on the backs of kids than to give them the support and guidance they seek. Instead, the kids are being taught that a well-respected teacher and administrator can lose his job over them. But maybe the solution is to govern the teachers more harshly. The exclusionary flag policy is an example of a solution in a desperate need of a problem, as is the Code of Conduct. One of those teachers out there called the flag rule a joke. Maybe a board member will seek to add those who have had premarital sex or women wearing pants to a list of behaviors on the Code of Conduct that he sees as problematic and worthy of termination. This county is suffering the blows from culture war nonsense, and it's making us the laughing stock of the state. Like those teachers said, it isn't really that difficult. You want test scores to rise? Support the students. You want the kids better adjusted? Support the students. You want to retain good teachers? Support the teachers. Rethink the flag policy in the Code of Conduct. Send a message that FCPS stands by its mission to nurture all learners, not just the normal ones. Don't allow the worst voices here to harm the most important stakeholders, the kids.
Mary, is it Bohacek? Did I say that right?
Hi.
Did I say that right?
My name is Reverend Mary Bohacek. I am a resident of the city of Winchester. I am employed by an agency in Frederick County, and I am here tonight speaking on behalf of my congregation, Shenandoah Valley Metropolitan Community Church. According to your bylaws, I believe that gives me five minutes to speak on behalf of my organization. First of all, I'd like to say, thank you. It is a blessing for me to be able to stand here and see you face-to-face, because I get to do something for the first time in my 11 years of public ministry. I get to say, shame on you. I've never done that before. I've been to millions of, well, maybe not millions, I'm not that old, but several pride marches, we'll say, or church services where I've had scripture thrown at me as a weapon. And I'm here to tell you, to paraphrase my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, "We are to love God and love our neighbor, and y'all have chosen to love yourselves." It's in every gospel. It's one of the few things that is in every single gospel. They like to argue, but see me on Sunday for that story. Even our friend Leviticus, who I'm sure we all love, says, "We are to welcome the stranger and to embrace kindness." So I do believe in a benevolent, all-loving God. Again, we can talk about that on Sunday. But for the first time in my life, I'm here to say, shame on you. I don't know Dr. Putt personally. I hope he watches this video feed and sees the impact what I would call ministry has had on this community. I want you to look out at the people here, because really, that's who I'm here to talk to, and see, these aren't just the people who care about what you did and didn't do. They're the people who cared and showed up. Oh, I forgot one of my titles. I'm sorry. My boss is going to yell at me. She's in the back of the room, actually, I think next on the list. I am also one of the co-directors of AREE's LGBTQ+ Center. It doesn't pay, but it's meaningful. Sadly, my jobs don't pay what I think they should, but rather, we do this because it is important to us. These people had better things to do with their Tuesday. I haven't seen a taco in this room, y'all. We are here because we care about our students and because you had a responsibility to your voting constituents to protect all of our students. Jesus said, "Bring the little children to me." That's actually Matthew 19. The second part of that is, "Do not hinder them." Again, shame on you. You took an opportunity for children to learn kindness to one another. That flex group never said those kids were queer, never said those kids identified in any way, never said any of that. It just said they were there to learn about kindness, and you took that away. You were more worried about what your constituents and your voters thought of you than what our children needed. And as our school board officials, shame on you. I don't need to tell you the statistics of LGBTQ children and the exponential increase of the risk of suicide. I would be belittling your own education and intelligence to do that. You already knew those things. I've stood here and told you those things before, but rather, you chose to ignore those statistics. And I know that you ignored them because we're still sitting here, because we're still having this conversation, because it has been more than five minutes since you canceled that flex time course. It has been an opportunity that you have neglected to act on. It should not take your community showing up and saying, shame on you, for this to have changed. It should have changed before we ever got to this point. You have made us a laughingstock in this state. You have made us a laughingstock in this country. But I want to say, thank you. Thank you for spending my tax dollars on a lawyer, because LGBTQ people are a protected class in the state of Virginia and have been for several years. So thank you for spending my tax dollars on the lawyer fees to defend your mistake. I want to say thank you for the opportunity for us to gather, because obviously, y'all don't care. If you cared, we wouldn't still be here. So really, I'm here to say, thank you to these people for showing up and saying, "This is not okay. You are creating divisions that do not need to exist. You are creating a culture war by refusing the basic level of education to all of our children. By refusing to teach kindness, you are by default enabling them to promote hate." And the Christian in me, and even the obese, I see my bigot friend left, I'm sorry, she missed it, but even the obese lesbian in me says, "No."
Time. Katie Vance?
Tough to go after her. Girl can preach. My name is Katie Vance, and I'm a resident of the Shawnee District and a mom of two amazing kids in a Frederick County elementary school. But to be completely honest, my husband and I are currently considering moving to a different school district, because we do not want my kids to grow up in an environment where they can't look up to their community leaders. I came here today planning to share statistics and data about suicide rates, depression, and the need for supportive services for LGBTQ students. And I realized something recently. You all are a smart group. You know this information. The problem is that based on the language you used and the policies you're implementing, it is very clear that you don't care. And I am so sad and cannot believe that I have to explain to grown adults why kindness matters. So instead, I want to talk about my job. I'm the boss that she referred to. I am the Executive Director of AREE, and we opened the first LGBTQ+ center in the northern Shenandoah Valley a year ago. Yes. And while hate clearly exists in certain small pockets of this room, it does not exist in our center. People find joy. People find community. They find love and support and care. For the Winchester and Frederick County community, please come find us. We will be your affirming space when adults and leaders in the community will not. We have groups, events, volunteers, all the special flags. We have them all. So come find us, and we have a lot of joy. I can't understand why you would not want to be a part of also spreading that joy. Do better. Thank you.
David Dent.
My name is David Dent, and I teach eighth-grade civics at Frederick County Middle School. And being a teacher is a second career for me. My first career was as a United Methodist Church pastor. I'm Mr. Dent in the classroom, and I'm Reverend Dent in the pulpit. When I retired as a pastor after 32 years, I realized that I was still called to work with young people. Whether in a church confirmation class or in a public school classroom, I am called to invest in young people and their future. First teaching spirituality to church leaders of tomorrow, and now teaching citizenship, democracy, critical thinking, and civil discourse to the community leaders of tomorrow. And I would urge and thank all of you, this is a calling. And I'm not alone in viewing teaching as a calling. Every day, I'm surrounded by teachers who have been given their lives to invest in young people. Week after week, they skillfully build lessons that engage and inspire students. Teachers inspire me. Do you know else who inspires me? Parents. I do not anticipate, I did not, excuse me, anticipate how deeply satisfying it is to partner with parents of my students. It turns out, parents are my people, whether we are celebrating their child's achievements or troubleshooting classroom behavior or problem-solving their adolescent well-being. Maybe I enjoy parents so much because they're about the age of my own children. We become allies together for the good of the students we both deeply, deeply care about. And in 100% of these cases, parents have been respectful and grateful of my partnership. Imagine how disturbed and frankly shocked I was at our last month's meeting, to hear the rhetoric of both parents and board members. I never experienced such vilification and suspicion of teachers. Not once has there ever been in my experience with parents or administrators that I know that ever feel demeaned in any kind of way. I have felt incredibly supportive. And I uplift the calling and the sacred trust of both teaching and parenting and the power of the partnership that is together. Teachers, though, are being devalued, demeaned, and demonized. Even gifted, seasoned teachers are struggling with a sense of defeat, despair, and diminishing personal well-being. They feel the mistrust and being targeted. The dynamic in our school system is undermining the passion and commitment of teachers, putting together retention at risk. And I urge you...
Carol Puckett.
I already spoke. I'm Carol Puckett.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were in there twice. Thank you. Pam Kennedy.
Pam Kennedy, Gainesboro District. I was wrong. I'm sorry. I don't know. I need help. I think those are words that bear thinking about as a code of conduct, an ethical and a moral code of conduct. It is obvious that in our nation today, things that were are not, despite the efforts of a vocal minority determined to bring back a past that largely exists in their hearts and imaginations. Various educational and community sources list the following as things a school board should do. Monitor progress using data. Connect with the community. Use resources strategically and advocate for more when needed. Focus on student achievement. Build positive relationships within and throughout the school district. Set goals. Have a clear vision. As I look at the list of issues you appear to be wrangling with, type of flags in the classroom, a teacher's dress code, and the need to represent the school system at all times, regulation of flex time in the schools for school groups, I'm really at a loss to see where those things come anywhere near what a school board really should be doing. I can see that you're frustrated, as everyone in this room is frustrated. To end with a quote, frustration is an interesting emotional state because it tends to bring out the worst in whoever is frustrated. And we've seen some of that tonight and at other meetings. So do the job you were elected to do. Focus on the high points... The dynamic in our school system is undermining the passion and commitment of teachers, putting together retention at risk. And I urge you-
Carol Puckett.
I already spoke. I'm Carol Puckett.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't realize you were in there twice. Thank you. Pam Kennedy.
Pam Kennedy, Gainesboro District. I was wrong. I'm sorry. I don't know. I need help. I think those are words that bear thinking about as a code of conduct, an ethical and a moral code of conduct. It is obvious that in our nation today, things that were are not. Despite the efforts of a vocal minority determined to bring back a past that largely exists in their hearts and imaginations, various educational and community sources list the following as things a school board should do. Monitor progress using data. Connect with the community. Use resources strategically and advocate for more when needed. Focus on student achievement. Build positive relationships within and throughout the school district. Set goals. Have a clear vision. As I look at the list of issues you appear to be wrangling with, type of flags in the classroom, a teacher's dress code, and the need to represent the school system at all times, regulation of flex time in the schools for school groups, I'm really at a loss to see where those things come anywhere near what a school board really should be doing. I can see that you're frustrated as everyone in this room is frustrated. End with a quote, frustration is an interesting emotional state because it tends to bring out the worst in whoever is frustrated. And we've seen some of that tonight and at other meetings. So, do the job you were elected to do. Focus on the high points, not the low. Don't be that moth that gets extinguished when it flies up to that light bulb and becomes a puff of dust. And I encourage you, I carry these around with me. I was wrong. I'm sorry. I don't know. I need help. We all do. Thank you.
Dani Higgins.
Hi, I'm Dani Higgins. I'm a resident of the Opeckin District and I'm also a teacher with FCPS. I'm here to talk to you primarily in a personal capacity about experience of inclusion and what that can mean and what that can bring for students. When I hear the rhetoric of these meetings, it really brings me back in time. I feel like I've traveled back in time 20 years when I was about the age of my students. And the only mentions of LGBTQ people I had in schools were largely negative slurs. That was all that I really heard. And it's been shown that having groups like this, having affirming spaces creates a lot of change for students. It increases sense of belonging. It gives them, it decreases the chances that they're going to use substances. It makes a huge difference in their mental health. It increases that sense of school belonging, that increases motivation, that helps test scores, all of these things that we say that we care about. And I think that these meetings show like why these clubs were needed. There are some people that are questioning, why is the space needed? Is this a special space that we're creating? These students are targeted. There's a lot of bullying that goes on in schools around these issues. There's a lot of homophobic speech that I every day as a teacher have to shut down, which is incredibly difficult to do when we've been put on notice. How do you shut down homophobic speech without necessarily laying out why this is a problem? And just for a teacher like me, I'm very aware. I've felt on notice since the start of this school year as these public meetings have gone down. And I just, earlier in this meeting, I was looking at that wall and I was seeing, I kept staring at social and cultural empathy. And that's what we really need here. We need empathy. There are some folks that maybe have a pathological lack of it and there's nothing that we can do about that. But I've seen much more empathy in this room than I have seen in the other, tonight than I have seen in the other board meetings. And I think that we need to continue that, continue that to model that type of kindness because that's what that club is about. I think a lot of people have a misconception about what these spaces are. They create community. I did not have that sense of community until I was an adult. That didn't change anything about me or my identity. All it did was delay me becoming a more authentic version of myself and feeling like I could breathe, having a sense of peace. And as you've heard tonight, not all students can afford that delay. I'm not going to go into those statistics further. I don't think it's necessary. But there's no indoctrination happening when you create affirming spaces. All we want is for LGBTQ kids to turn into LGBTQ adults. That is all we are asking. Thank you for your time.
Sam Gessford.
Hello, my name is Sam Gessford. I'm an English teacher at Robert Yehler Middle School. My intention is not to make any of this about myself, but to reach my point, I do have to start with myself. I was a weird kid and I felt like, you know, there wasn't a place in the world for me. But thankfully, a handful of qualified, often unorthodox, but always compassionate teachers put me on notice. They taught me how to express myself in the spaces they worked diligently to ensure were safe for everyone. For example, my second grade teacher let me wear a Wolverine mask when I presented a report on a comic book. My eighth grade Spanish teacher let me write a play about Star Wars using our vocabulary. My 10th grade English teacher let me write an essay about the significance of punk rock. And those are just a smattering of examples of my teachers knowing who I was and what I needed to feel like I belonged. Today, I'm a weird adult, but I have found my place. During my 12 years in the classroom, inspired by those teachers who cared for me, I have worked diligently to make my classroom a space in which all of my students feel safe. I've had LGBTQ plus students come out to me before coming out to their friends because they felt safe. I've had students of color share their worries with me about upsetting signs in their neighborhoods because they felt safe. I've had students tell heartbreaking stories about trauma in essays because they felt safe. Students write poems about their deeply held religious beliefs because they felt safe. And they felt safe because I was taught to communicate from a place of kindness. Now, kindness is a choice, one most often represented by language. These kids are listening and they hear how we talk to and about them and each other. They hear how we agree, how we disagree, and how we view those whose beliefs and lifestyles don't directly align with the perceived status quo. When they hear conversations about banning books or canceling inclusive clubs, this has a direct effect on how they view and value their literacy and on their understanding of mutual respect. When they hear vitriolic hate speech spewed across the very floors of this room, it has a direct effect on their perception of acceptable discourse. When they hear of respected administrators being put on leave and all of their teachers being put on notice, it has a direct effect on their attitude toward the academic environment. Notice that teachers are professionals and we are not and never have been in the business of indoctrination, but it's impossible to do this work well without being in the business of compassion. Now, I urge you, members of the school board, to consider fairness and kindness and justice in proposed policies while considering how our discourse and rhetoric shapes the blossoming minds of those who will inherit this earth and what kind of place we want to leave for them. Now, my hope is that it will be a place that's a little weird and a lot of kind. Thank you.
Sonya, please tell me, is Marfatiya correct? I'm sorry.
It's okay, we've all read rosters.
I apologize.
No worries. Good evening, my name is Sonya Marfatiya Gud and I live in the Back Creek District. The kids are always watching. They watch how their parents speak and act. And with the access of technology, they watch these school board meetings and see for themselves how the community behaves in a boardroom setting. They see what happens when their own school board won't follow a code of conduct. They see what happens when the chairman gives a disclaimer that speakers should be courteous but allow speakers to curse and yell at the board. They see what happens when a parent doesn't like an LGBTQ plus club. They see what happens when people harass the principal and the administration. They see their beloved principal removed from their school and the highlight of their day, flex time, taken away. They see that if a person yells enough and makes a big stink, they get their way. And you wonder why there are discipline issues in schools. What happens to the rest of the kids? Don't their rights matter? Why are we allowing parents who don't have an education degree and are not employees of the school division to dictate what is or isn't being taught or allowed in our schools? Parents know they can opt out. So, while you got rid of a program that benefited all students, who gets punished? And while you placed a principal on administrative leave and transferred them to another school as a teacher, who benefits? All the kids at FCMS just want their principal and flex time back as it was designed as part of Inspired 2025. Thank you.
Kristy Jett.
My name is Kristy Jett and I missed the black shirt memo. I stand in solidarity. Okay. I'm a resident of the Gainesboro District. After the October statement that was sent out to FCMS families, letting us all know in as few words as possible that Jerry Putt would no longer be principal, and that was it, I emailed all of you to ask you, what could Jerry Putt have possibly done that would warrant immediate dismissal? A man so well-liked he manages to be popular with middle schoolers. Ms. Klein, you told me that there were more documented instances and that more information would be coming shortly. Mr. Bell, you told me to be patient. Mr. Atkins, you suggested it wasn't really about flex time at all, but actually test scores. Mr. Sturtevant, you had no comment. And everyone reminded me that this was a confidential personnel matter. I got no real answer, but I was assured over and over by all of you that you remain committed to providing all students a safe and high-quality education. Which students? You talk about transparency in addressing parent concerns. Which parents? Well, what might be personnel to you is personal to me. This is my kid hurting. My kid's teachers who feel like they cannot speak up and are not supported by their school board. My school district that I believed in so much that I ran for one of those seats. Do you think students aren't internalizing what they hear? My daughter asked me if Dr. Putt left because they're all failing. That's what the kids are hearing because you are leaving them with no answers. And instead of flex time, that little 30 minutes of the day where they got to direct what they wanted to learn and be around their friends, they're spending another half hour on their Chromebooks with their headphones on, shut out from the world. Congratulations. You want to thank others for being your eyes and ears? How about using your own? Did anybody bother talking to Dr. Putt or setting foot inside Frederick County Middle School before you decided to abruptly move the principal out? Or have you asked yourselves why you need eyes and ears that aren't yours? Is it because you have allowed a culture of negativity and retaliation to take hold so that the students and staff, the literal eyes and ears in those buildings, feel they cannot come to you? These are your policies, your votes, your culture. But the great thing is, it's also in your power to fix. So, if you want to put someone on notice, start at the top.
Cherise Woodward.
I think I get five minutes. You're the best. Okay. Hello, I am Cherise Woodward. I am a product of Frederick County Public Schools. I'm a parent of Frederick County Public Schools and I'm a teacher and I am the FCEA president. Members of the Frederick County School Board, educators, parents, and community, thank you for granting me the opportunity to, excuse me, to talk. I stand before you to address the critical importance of fostering a collaborative and respectful educational environment, particularly when we encounter differing opinions. When disagreements arise, especially in a classroom setting, it is paramount that we engage directly with educators involved. Open and respectful dialogue allows us to address concerns constructively, focusing on what truly matters, the well-being and success of students. Belittling educators in public forms only heightens emotions and distracts from our shared goal of enhancing student learning. We must always recognize the current atmosphere of fear surrounding job security within our school system. News from board members can create a sense of uncertainty that affects not only educators but also the students they serve. Research shows that without basic needs, food, water, shelter, and job security, individuals can express trauma responses which can hinder their ability to teach and learn effectively. To create a supportive environment, we can prioritize resources and training for stakeholders. Understanding the distinction between being an ally, supporter, or member of LGBTQIA+ plus communities does not equate to being a child predator. Rather, it acknowledges that those choices are a person's right. The Bible illustrates through Jesus who befriended those who were different from Him and treated everyone with kindness. Furthermore, establishing codes of conduct that hold teachers to a higher standard both in the classroom and at home is unacceptable unless applied uniformly to everyone. When educators feel supported, they are better prepared to cultivate classrooms that honor diversity and foster meaningful learning for all students. As we navigate this complexity of education, it is vital to embody the values of respect and understanding. When we approach discussions with an open mind, we create a community that values diverse perspectives. Acceptance should not only be a lesson taught in classrooms, but a principle upheld by all members of our community. In conclusion, I urge the Frederick County School Board to foster an environment where collaboration, support, and respect are at the forefront. By doing so, we can ensure that every educator feels valued and every student has the opportunity to thrive. Let's work together to create an educational landscape that prioritizes the needs of our students, celebrates our differences, and builds a stronger, more inclusive community. Thank you for your time and commitment to the future of our students.
Rhonda Lancaster.
Good evening. I'm Rhonda Lancaster, a 1992 graduate of James Wood High School and a 20-year veteran and teacher in Frederick County Public Schools. First of all, let me thank you for working with the Board of Supervisors to secure funding for the much-needed fourth high school and expansions at Middletown and Jordan Springs Elementary Schools. Allocating funds for the smooth operations of our schools is a top responsibility for your positions as school board members. This work is appreciated. Another responsibility is helping bring unity to our educational system from the time students enter their first Frederick County Public School through graduation. And this is not a responsibility that should be guided by political movements. Rather, it should be guided by sound judgments backed by research-based practices. The professionals you've hired should be an integral part of your decisions because like you, we have the academic, physical, and mental well-being of every child in mind. We also have the training and ongoing professional development to know what are best practices for the students in our care. Additionally, we are in the trenches every day with students who carry the baggage of the world on their shoulders and we help relieve that burden long enough to teach them each day. Recently, I asked my students to reflect on what brings them joy in life and in the classroom. In life, they listed all their hobbies, sports, entertainment, time spent with friends and family. In the classroom, a few mentioned a teacher who'd worked one-on-one with them until they grasped a difficult concept or a teacher who found an innovative approach to helping an entire class learn the material. What far-outpaced mentions of curriculum were the social aspects of education, such as working with their friends or playing competitive learning games. Along with spending time with peers, they talked about teachers who saw them as individuals, who took time to celebrate their successes or expressed concern about issues outside of the classroom. Our recognition of each student as an individual helps build an important sense of community in which all students feel like they belong and that is when learning can happen. Another thing that ranked high on my students' list of what brought them joy in the classroom was being able to make choices about what they learned or how they expressed their learning. When you think back on your education, maybe you remember a teacher who allowed you to go beyond the curriculum to investigate something you cared about or were just curious about. Maybe that's why you worked in corrections or public utilities or became a pilot or entrepreneur or teacher. As you lead our district, please keep in mind that student choice is an important part of the curriculum-
Time.
-and that teachers should be praised for their guidance. They provide every student every day.
Jim Lancaster.
Good evening. My name is Jim Lancaster and I have taught in Frederick County Public Schools for 20 years. In that time, I have worked alongside hundreds of deeply dedicated teachers who have poured more time, energy, and talent than could possibly be measured into ensuring that every single student in FCPS is taught to the highest possible standards and treated with kindness, respect, and empathy. They have ensured that every student has the opportunity to learn and experience success. In all that time, I have never worked with anyone who was here for the money or for political reasons or to push any kind of agenda beyond making sure that all students feel safe, respected, and valued in their school. More than anything else, teachers are here because they want to help. They give so much of themselves to help students, families, and the community. To see these same teachers who work very hard every day to do their absolute best, treated with distrust and disdain and disrespect in the newspaper, in board meetings, and on social media is not only harmful and disheartening, it is terrifying. It is terrifying because what this could mean for the future of our students and our schools. In recent years, we are seeing unprecedented local and national teacher shortages. Teachers have left FCPS and the teaching field for a variety of reasons. The teachers who remain here are here because they care about this county. They care about their schools and they care about students and their families. If they are chased away by distrust, disrespect, and intolerance, the damage to FCPS will be incalculable. The dedication, experience, and enthusiasm these teachers bring to school every day cannot be easily replaced. As someone- As someone who has dedicated 20 years to helping students in this county, I want to see it flourish. I don't want any students to lose their favorite teachers, their favorite counselors, or their favorite administrators. I don't want any students to feel like they aren't important, respected, and cared for. Teachers and students who feel safe and supported lead to successful schools and a productive community for everyone. I know that in the end, this is the result we all want. Please consider the environment that your decisions, choices, and words are creating in FCPS. Thank you.
That precludes the public speaking section.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion for a five-minute recess, for a process break for the folks in the audience, as well as those up here on the dais.
Second. Been a motion improperly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Break for five minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I make a motion that we reconvene from recess.
Second.
Motion has been made, properly seconded, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are back in session. Next on our agenda is the reports. I am going to turn it over to Dr. Hummer.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple items here. We have a lot going on, and I want to share some information. First and foremost, I want to thank this, I want to take this time to thank all of our staff and students coming today for their recognitions. Our students are doing a magnificent job, and they wouldn't be able to accomplish a lot of these great things without our amazing staff. Our teachers, our aides, our bus drivers, our instructional assistants, coaches, administrators, counselors, and all of our other amazing staff are working tirelessly to do what is best for all of our students, and I'm very proud and grateful for them leading our wonderful students. I also want to acknowledge all of our veterans and wish them a Happy Veterans Day. Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I would like to have all of our veterans stand, if you don't mind, so we can give you a big, big round of applause. If we can have our veterans stand in the room? Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you for your service and dedication to this amazing country. We hosted a Veterans Day breakfast last Friday. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for attending with us, and wanted to thank our National Honor Society students for putting on such an amazing event, as well as our Red Bud Run students for celebrating our amazing veterans. We are going to be hosting this event every year, so hope to see you all out next year, and we had a really great turnout and looking forward to this to continue. Last week was also School Psychologist Week. We greatly appreciate all of our school psychologists for their hard work and dedication to our school community, which includes, but not limited to, being involved in our threat assessments to keep our students, staff, and community safe, completing evaluations to determine students if they're eligible for IEPs and 504s, as well as making recommendations for how we support our students' overall well-being. We thank you for your tireless efforts, and thank you for your dedication to our students. Just a couple more, Mr. Chair, I promise, we have a lot going on. I also want to thank again everyone for their hard work on getting our fourth high school and two elementary school expansions projects approved. And I also want to take this time to again thank our Board of Supervisors for approving these much-needed projects. You can applause if you want to. This is a big deal for our community and for our students. Very, very big deal. We have a lot of work to do. We're looking forward to collaborate with our staff, with our parents, with both of our boards, and other community stakeholders, as we build these three projects together for our 21st century learners, as well as being good stewards of our dollar. Also, for the public to know, there will be many opportunities to provide feedback, as well as updates going on, on our website through the CIP section, which is going to have each of these three projects. They are going to have a lot of information in there as we move forwards with these three projects, because 2028-28 is going to be the two elementary projects, and 2029, the high school will be completed, and it will be here before we know it. So I want to make sure that everybody stays well-informed, and please let us know if you have any questions. So that's a very, very big deal. I also have two other quick plugs. First, we posted the School Board Advisory Committee applications two weeks ago and are looking forward to these meetings starting very soon. These applications are projected to go before the board, these applicants, excuse me, are projected to go before the board on January 7th at the organizational meeting, and then we will host an information meeting for the applicants, for the ones who are nominated, to provide logistics on next steps, as well as very important information. As a reminder, we have eight total advisory groups. We have CTE, we have Gifted, we have Special Education, and the five new ones that we added are Budget, CIP, Transportation, what did I miss? Excuse me, Technology, as well as School Health. So we're very excited about these five new advisory committees, and we're looking forward to engaging with the community in a new fashion. Lastly, we are going to have our upcoming CIP Town Halls that are scheduled in the months of November and December, and this will be an opportunity for us to engage in our current CIP projects, as well as our future CIP projects. Yes, we have received, received funding for these three projects, but we have other projects that are on the horizon, and we want to continue to engage with the community on these projects. So for these three meetings, the first will be at James Wood High School on November 25th at 5:30. We also have Millbrook High School, December 5th at 5:30, and then December 11th at Sharando at 5:30. These will be listed on our website. We will have my presentation up on the website, and we're also going to record the first session, so if you're not able to make it, you can watch this as much as you desire. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and that's all I have.
Next on the agenda is the unfinished business. We'd like to start with the proposed budget priorities by Dr. Hummer.
All right. Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chair. So I do have these up in front of you, as well as for those listening at home. These were our budget priorities for last year, as you can see on the slide, and these are also the priorities that we are recommending to be approved for next year. So I have presented these to you all now two times, and I wanted to see if you had any feedback, and if not, I am, these are up for approval this evening.
Do we have a motion for the proposed budget priorities?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the budget priorities to, what?
Approve the budget.
Approve the budget. I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget priorities for FY '25.
Second.
Excuse me, FY '26. These were FY '25, so these are for FY '26. Oh, sorry, FY '26. My apologies.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion on the matter? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Next up is our proposed CIP goals and priorities. This is new for us. This is something that I would like for you all to consider to approve every year, as we continue to work towards our current CIP priorities, as well as we're going to review these every year with our five-year plan that we will also be working with the community on. So these have been presented to you two times, and these are up for your approval, Mr. Chair.
Okay, do we have a motion for the proposed CIP priorities for fiscal year '26?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bell.
I'd like to forward or approve the, I'd like to approve the proposed CIP goal and priorities for FY '26.
Second.
We have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I'm really looking forward to our priorities and our goals here. For too long, we've been, without much of a vision, looking forward to student capacity and enrollment numbers. This gives the community the opportunity to look ahead with us at our projected capacities, whether or not we have to build a new high school, rezone children, but the community should be involved in that, and we would look forward to seeing any suggestions you all have in that, and look forward to working with you on that. We don't want it to be a surprise to the community when we have to go do redistricting. Obviously, we're going to have to do it once we get the fourth high school and to adjust some of the enrollment at specific schools due to the population growth within the county. So thank you to you and your staff, Dr. Hummer, for going ahead and looking, looking to the future for Frederick County. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, Mr. Chair. So we got two other items. The first is the list of suggested CIP project priorities. So let me just, for those viewers at home, and then also to remind the board of this process, so every year, the county adopts a five-year CIP project list, and that CIP project list contains numerous projects across the county, not just the schools, but we are part of that process. So we have to provide them every year what our five-year projected project list is. Now, with the three projects that were just approved, they are on that list. You already approved those items, but as I mentioned, we are going to be in 2029, 2030 before we know it, and we have other projects on the list. Here is the entire list of projects, after working with my team, of the 19 projects that we are considering. These are projects that the school board has not adopted. These are just projects that my team and I have worked through, based on the age and quality of our buildings. Also, thank you, Mr. Atkins, what you said earlier about looking at our projections and our enrollments. We have to stay ahead of that, so that we can get ahead of providing a conducive learning environment for our students, because class size does matter for our students to be learning. So our recommendation, as we've discussed, and this is the third time we are working through this, is we are recommending that the next three projects on the list are the Bass Hoover Elementary School Phase II renovation, the Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School Phase II renovation, and the onsite traffic safety improvements. I want to be very, very clear, and this is for those listening at home, because we understand that the top three projects on this list are very expensive, and we want to be cognizant of the debt capacity of the county, that we are not going to be asking for funding, if you look over to the right, until we get closer to 2028. Additionally, these projects can change. We are going to be reviewing this every year, but right now, these items are due downtown, and we want to make sure that we have these projects, and we will continue to work through these. So our recommendation, Mr. Chair, is that we move forward with the next three projects on this list, Bass Hoover Elementary School Phase II renovation, Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School Phase II renovation, and the onsite traffic safety improvements. Those are the three items we're recommending for you all for approval this evening, and of course, open for any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move that the board adopt the Bass Hoover Elementary School Phase II renovation, the Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School Phase II renovation, and the onsite traffic safety improvements as the board's five-year CIP project priorities for the FY '26 year presented by the superintendent.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just have a clarification point I'd like to share with the community that's, that are, that are in the gallery, as well as watching online. So when you see number four and number five, both the renovations for the elementary schools, you see two numbers. For the first, when you see the $31,566,150, oh, million, yeah, thank you, commas are important. And then you also see the $24,200, or $24,210,900 for Bass Hoover, for example. The top number, the most expensive, the $31 million, that would be if we did a full renovation estimate. The $24 million is if we did a partial, so we have not yet decided on those yet. So just to provide some clarity, that's why there's two numbers for those two projects.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I know this was previously discussed, but just to bring clarity out to the public, are these numbers projected at construction costs today, or are they projected at construction costs for FY '28?
So, Mr. Goodwin, I know we've calculated this based on today, but I think we put some projections in there. Please clarify that for us.
Yes, sir. These costs have had 5% added on them to, it's generally less, sometimes than 5%, but it's between 3% and 5%, which has been added, so that would be for that price. Those projects for that cost, they're updated.
Thank you, Mr. Goodwin. Great question, Mr. Atkins. Thank you.
Hearing no further discussion? Have a motion been properly seconded? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
The last item, Mr. Chair, is the third reading of 119P. We've reviewed that, based on the feedback that you all had provided to us. It is listed there in Board Docs, and the biggest change was with the signs, that the audience can bring signs with them, they just need to stand in the space in the room that is not distracting for other members that are participating, as well as some other verbiage that you all had recommended to change. So we took all of that and put it forth, so now it is up for you all for approval.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the, the policy 119P as written.
Second.
We have a motion, it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay, that motion does carry. Okay, next on the agenda is new business. Up next is new business, first is Building and Grounds Committee Meeting Report. Mr. Atkins.
All right, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the Building and Grounds Committee of Frederick County Public Schools was held on November 11th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 2:46 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Pollard discussed the capital projects list highlights, including Support Facilities West, Exterior Door Replacement at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School, and Orchard View Elementary School, and had the bleacher replacement and track overlay at James Wood Middle School. He also discussed notable funding, or notable funded CAP projects, and progress and awarded unobligated funds. Mr. Kenny gave an update on the James Wood High School renovation. Mr. Goodwin discussed the three different Virginia construction project delay models, design, bid, build, construction management at risk, CMAR, and public-private partnerships, and shared the project delivery recommendations for the free, for the three recently funded projects. Ms. Chapman presented the recommendations for a contract award to PBI Environmental Restoration LLC, T slash A, PBI Commercial for the Dow J Howard Diesel and Data Center, or Data Science Lab HVAC renovation in the amount of $1,196,363.29, and also shared the recommendation for a contract award to Blackstone Roofing LLC for the roof replacement at James Wood Middle School in the amount of $899,000, and for the roof replacement at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School in the amount of $310,000. The meeting adjourned at four, or the meeting adjourned at 5:41 PM, sorry. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to the board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on November 11th? All right, seeing none, we have four action items coming out of this meeting. One, I move the board approve the contract award to PBI Environmental Restoration LLC, T slash A, PBI Commercial for the Dow J Howard Diesel and Data Science Lab HVAC renovation in the, in the amount of $1,196,363.29.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion made and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Number two, I move the board approve the contract award to Blackstone Roofing LLC for the roof replacement at James Wood Middle School in the amount of $899,000.
Second.
Another motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries.
All right. Number three, I move the board approve the contract award to Blackstone Roofing LLC for the roof replacement at Apple Pie Ridge Elementary School in the amount of $310,000.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Bell's quick on the seconds today. I like you.
Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Number four, I move the board approve the minutes for the Building and Grounds Meeting held on November 11th, 2024.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Let's see, what's, next we have the Instruction Committee Meeting Report. Mr. Bell.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the Instruction Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on November 11th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 5:45 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Kaufman discussed the Special Education Advisory Committee, S C, sorry, S E A C. Dr. Myers reviewed the program of studies, middle school gifted courses. This included requests for a name change from Gifted Exploratory for Middle School or GEMS to Gifted Academic Program or GAP. Transition to middle school, the addition of Gifted Academic Program, GAP Research I, to the program studies for the 2025-2026 school year. Academic Program GAP Research 1 to the Program Studies for the 2025-2026 school year, and the addition of a partial credit of .5 for the Gifted Academic Program GAP Research 2 for the 2025-2026 school year. She also gave an update on the Secondary Grading Coalition, which included grading scale practices in Virginia. The meeting adjourned at 6:42 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Instruction Committee meeting held on November 11th? Hearing none. We have a couple of action items, four to be exact. Number one, I move the board approve the request for the name change from Gifted Exploratory for Middle School or GEMS to Gifted Academic Program GAP, and Problem Solving Research and Independent Study for Middle School Prisms to Gifted Academic Program GAP Research 2 for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Second, I move the board approve the request to add Gifted Academic GAP Research 1 to the Program of Studies for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And third, I move the board approve the request to add a partial credit of .5 for the Gifted Academic Program Research 2 for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, I move the board approve the minutes from the Instruction Committee meeting held on November 11th, 2024.
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is the Personnel Committee Meeting Report. I believe Vice Chair Klein is going to read that for us.
Yes, sir, I am. Normal Chair Mr. Funus is having some voice issues tonight, so I'm going to pinch-hit for him, so I'll be reading the Personnel Committee report on his behalf. A meeting of the Personnel Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on November 18th, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:32 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Ms. Frekely thanked the members for serving on the Personnel Committee and shared her appreciation for all FCPS staff and their hard work. Mrs. Campbell gave a staffing update, which included professional vacancies, vacancies, support vacancies as of November 8th, 2024, professional vacancies filled as of November, November 8th, 2024, and years of experience of new hires. Mrs. Rinker shared the celebrations of recruitment efforts, the approximate cost of onboarding, teachers with 26-plus years of experience in the divisions in which they previously taught, and a recruitment and retention update. Mrs. Frekely shared the results of the benefits and incentive survey for 2025-26 that was previously sent out to FCS, FCPS employees, and gave an update on the employee code of conduct. Mrs. Knight discussed the Instruction Annual Staffing and Talent Report, which included the standard of quality SOQ information, the local ratios for elementary schools, elementary resource classes, elementary school size reduction in Title I, the local ratios for middle schools and high schools, and the classes exceeding SOQ guidance. Mrs. Frekely shared the licensed and classified staff for 2023-24 and the current school year, and the teacher years of experience for 2024-25, and the top reasons for staff leaving FCPS in 2023-24. She also announced Substitute Appreciation Day on November 22nd, 2024, and thanked all substitutes. Dr. Hummer thanked the team for putting all of this information together for the committee. The committee adjourned at 5:23 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Personnel Committee meeting held on November 18th? Seeing no questions, there is one action item. I move the board approve the minutes from the Personnel Committee meeting held on November 18th, 2024.
Second. Motion has been made and properly seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, last up is board member comments. Do we have any board member comments for this evening? I would, oh, go ahead if you're.
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Bell?
First, thank you so much to our students who were honored this evening for the hard work that they've done. It seems like every board meeting, we see the ag program front and center, which I love very, very much. So thank you very much for the hard work that you have done, as well as your teachers have done on your behalf. And I want to also say thank you to everyone, and I mean everyone who came out to speak this evening. You gave us a lot to think about, a lot to take in, and a lot to process, and I truly appreciate that. There is a couple of things I do want to address. Number one, I want to apologize for some of the behavior that did occur this evening in tonight's meeting, and the hatred that was spewed. I do apologize for that. I didn't do it myself, but I feel that it's necessary to make that apology. I also want to apologize because in the Board of Supervisors meeting, when we were waiting patiently for the fourth high school information, the whether or not we were going to get the funding, we had to sit through a 15-minute slideshow that was absolutely ridiculous, and had no place in that particular meeting whatsoever. So I'm very sorry for those of you that had to experience that. Thankfully, I went home, otherwise I might have joined one of the other residents in this gallery being kicked out of that meeting. At any rate, I do want to leave you with a singular quote that I hope sums up how I feel about everything that you've said, and it's from one of my personal heroes, Dr. King. "Love is the greatest force in the universe. It is the heartbeat of the moral cosmos. We who love are participants in the being of God." Thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Atkins.
I wanted to go ahead and start off with the students and say thank you for all the inspiration from the FFA students. They, those kids get like so many awards and pictures. I don't know if they have space on their parents' wall anymore. I mean, they crush it everywhere, not only in the county, not only in the state, but you heard tonight, they went national and just did wonderful things. Shout out to Shorando. I'm not trying to pick a favorite here, but I mean, they really put it.
They will.
Put forth. I know, I saw the jacket. But yeah, they, they really have a top-tier program over there. The Kemper Cares by Miss, one of our FCPS students, going down and helping out hurricane victims. I spoke with him before the meeting, and wanted to reiterate something that we've talked about here on the board. We have, over at Facilities, extra gear, you know, old desks, stuff like that, that might be able to set up a classroom down there. So I hope that they reach out and can probably take some of that stuff off of our hands and free up some space. It would go to a 501(c)(3), so you know, it is within regulations, and we've done, posted it up a couple of times on the auction site. I want to congratulate Ms. Penny, you know, for her great management. I mean, what an accolade that was, you know, to have no negative marks within our school nutrition program. Also wanted to let everybody know, we do have LGBTQ clubs. If anybody does want to participate in those, those are an after-school program. If your school doesn't have one, I encourage you to start one. I know that, I think last meeting, I spoke on that as well, and along with any other clubs, if you want to have a Christian club, if you wanted to have a Muslim club, if you want to have any kind of club after school, hey, that's awesome, that you're right, and it's legal by law. Oh, and then lastly, thank you to the board, our administration, the Board of Supervisors, and the community as a whole. I know a lot of you have reached out to your Board of Supervisors, you've reached out to us about the fourth high school. I'm sorry it's taken this long, you know, but we've got it passed now, and hopefully that relieves a little bit of stress from our teaching staff and from the students, so they can learn a little bit better. I hope that the community members get involved with this. We will be putting forth committees that anybody can sign up to be on. I don't know what the space capacity is for that, but we want to hear your input on that, what we can have in this school, how to make a better, a better learning environment to our students. You know, we want the teachers involved. They're the ones that are going to have to walk those hallowed halls. So any, any community feedback that we can get, please send it our way. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to add one more thing, and I apologize, I did this last time, and I won't do it again, or probably will. I just want to say thank you to you. The way you handled tonight's meeting, the frustration that you clearly had, and we all had, and the group out here has had. Despite all of it, we were able to get through 35, 36 different comments, and we still managed to accomplish the business at hand. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, for the work that you've done tonight.
Any other comments? I appreciate those words. I wasn't going to say anything, but I will mention one thing. On Veterans Day, I was honored to go to the breakfast at Millbrook High School, and students from all three high schools helped prepare that thing. And when I first got there, I texted Dr. Hummer and said, "I'm in my 60s, and I'm the youngest veteran in this room."[1656.51][1656.51](LAUGHING). Thankfully, thankfully, younger veterans showed up, so. But of all the things that I've done in my life, and I've done quite a bit, father, husband, grandfather, published author, correctional officer, 36 years, rising to the rank of lieutenant, musician, other than being a minister of the gospel of Jesus Christ, being a veteran is the one thing that I look back on, and I don't know if pride is the right word, but the one thing that I look back on fondly in all the times that I spent in the Army and with the folks that I served with. And it's just been a, one of the biggest privileges and pleasures that I've ever done to serve this nation, and wear the uniform, and that's one of the things that I'm most proudest of. But after that breakfast was over, and they had a wonderful program, the elementary school across the way, and I believe it's Red Bud Run.
That is correct.
Thank you. I was hoping I wasn't going to screw that up. Every student in that school came out to the road, and they were going to wave and thank the veterans as they drove by. And one of the veterans tapped me on the shoulder and said, "We need to go over there." And I walked the whole entire length of students out of the school, and was able to shake hands and fist bump, and a couple of them gave me hugs. But I'd never experienced that in my life, all those young kids waving American flags and screaming "thank you" at the top of their lungs to all those people. And there were some people in that room that I was in awe of. I remember the one gunny sergeant walked in in full dress, and I know it's been a while since he wore that dress uniform. I can't wear my dress uniform, so. But I thank the students that honored the veterans, and, because it's, the veterans are near and dear to my heart, so, but that's all I wanted to say. So our, we have one announcement, and that is, our next School Board meeting is on December 10th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. So with that said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second. It's been motioned and properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.